I call the January 7, 2019 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clark, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semus.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Dr. Patton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Willabreata Portsmouth Incorporated is a corporate citizen and philanthropist to the city of Portsmouth. Willabreata serves as a municipal trash transfer station for the city of Portsmouth as part of our relationship with the Southeastern Public Service Authority, better known as SIPSA. In response to City Council's request for an update on the financial viability of Willabreata, given recent reports of changing ownership, we have representatives from SIPSA to speak to the current status and operation of Willabreata as a part of the overall SIPSA operation. Mr. C.W. Luke McCoy, Portsmouth Governor Appointee and Vice Chair to SIPSA, Liesel De Vary, Executive Director for SIPSA, and Mr. John Kiefer, Norfolk's Governor Appointee and Chairman of SIPSA, are here to update on the Willabreata and other components of SIPSA. The second presentation, Mrs. Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, will present a financial overview of the city's governmental accounting standards to provide for our new council members information that will assist them in understanding the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And the third presentation, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide a presentation regarding the regional broadband network and Portsmouth Community Broadband Network, RPCBN, RFP, status. This presentation will provide a holistic view of both the municipality and the regional efforts relating to fiber broadband. Mr. McCoy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Been a long time since I've stood up here before you. Still feels pretty good.
Great, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
On your newly elected position to Vice Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Members of City Council, Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby, I'd also like to take this time to congratulate Shannon Glover to your selection.
Thanks, sir.
By the citizens of this great city, to the City Council seat.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Paul Battle, I would like to congratulate you on your selection by the citizens of this great city, on that position of councilperson, councilman. Paul, you and I go back more years than I want to tell this council tonight.
We did, thank you.
A lot farther than I can tell you with your dad. We have, I have known the Battle family, and back in the eighties, Paul worked for me at one time. So it's amazing. We talked about a lot of things, Paul, but I don't think I ever talked about you becoming a City Council. Just goes to show you, we don't know what the future holds.
You were responsible for my ascending.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you know who to go to?
I will not repeat anything that Paul and I said. It is a pleasure for me to be here for a couple of reasons. Having spent 30 years with the city of Portsmouth, rising from a Director of Department to that of the City Manager position, I served that position and every position that I had with pride. I've been involved indirectly or directly in the solid waste industry since 1966. Now, everybody start counting. Gosh, how old is he? I'm getting old. But I was instrumental when the city of Norfolk and the city of Virginia Beach signed its first contract to put all of the trash at Mount Trashmore One. And I go back that far, and I sold the city of Virginia Beach and the city of Norfolk the first piece of equipment that went on that landfill. I have the distinct pleasure of telling you, plus the 30 years that I've served with the city of Portsmouth, I have served as your liaison to the SIPSA board for in excess of 14 years. 11 years prior to my retirement, and three years since I have been reappointed, and I'm in my second term. But my first term did not count because I filled the unexpired term of Tim Oakesman, which later left the city. So I have a total of 14 years with SIPSA. I also have with me tonight John Kiefer. John is the retired Director of Public Works for the city of Norfolk, serving 23 years in that position, and prior to that, John served 20 years in the United States Navy. John has, in his fifth year of serving, two years prior to his retirement and three years since that time, on the SIPSA board, and he was, and I were elected to Chairman and Vice Chairman at the same time. We have truly become a team. The biggest team player that we have with us tonight is our Executive Director, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Liesel De Vary. Liesel?
Thank you.
Liesel comes to us tonight as Executive Director and Chief Financial Officer from December 2017 to present. Her interim Executive Director from July to December of 2017, Deputy Executive Director and CFO from 2009 and 2017. Since that time, prior to that, Liesel was Budget and Finance Director for the Isle of Wight County from 2004 until 2009. Are excited about as to where we are. I would like to tell you that I sit beside and I work with Solomon Ashby on the SIPSA board. We ask a lot of questions. We don't take things for granted, and I think that if anything, Liesel will tell you that John Kiefer and I both, and Solomon, be lead by example. With that in mind, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our Executive Director of the Southeastern Public Service Authority, Liesel De Vary.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity today to give you an overview of SIPSA, what we do, and give you some of the highlights from this past year. First of all, our core purpose is the management of the safe and environmentally sound disposal of regional waste. SIPSA is a public body incorporated in the state of Virginia and has all the rights, powers, and duties set forth in Chapter 51 of Title 15.2 of the Code of Virginia. Specifically, Section 15.2, 5102.1, which was amended in 2009, and it's commonly referred to either House Bill 1872 or the Cosgrove Bill. It made several changes to how SIPSA is governed. It established a 16-member Board of Directors comprised of eight Governor-appointed members. They must possess general business knowledge. They shall not be an elected official, which is the biggest change, and they are nominated by each member locality. And then we also have eight ex officio members, and they are employees appointed by the governing body for each of the eight localities. The other thing that is required by the code is that SIPSA is to maintain a strategic operating and financial plan. We must evaluate landfill airspace capacity annually, adhere to FOIA, and it limits the Executive Director's authority to approve contracts in excess of $30,000 without Board approval. So bottom line is the Board has to be very informed before decisions are made. SIPSA operations, for those of you that might not be familiar, our SIPSA staff operate nine transfer stations throughout southeastern Virginia. We operate the regional landfill in Suffolk. We have a transportation division, which includes 30 tractors and 40 trailers. We have a fleet maintenance operation. There's one shop here in Portsmouth, and then there's another shop out at our regional landfill. We have a household hazardous waste program, which Portsmouth participates in. We have a tire shredding facility, a white goods and scrap metal program, and a comprehensive safety program. Just to give you some SIPSA staffs, we call this with 140 employees. Our transfer stations handle over 560,000 tons of waste a year, is what comes through them. The transportation division hauls over 410,000 tons per year, and they drive over 760,000 miles in those tractor-trailers. The regional landfill accepts over 325,000 tons per year. Our fleet maintenance manages approximately 245 pieces of rolling stock, and it's ranging from a pickup truck to a dozer, an excavator, to tractors and trailers. Very diverse. Our tire shredder processes over 328,000 tires, and I think that you all would be interested in something like that, only because I do believe you bring us a lot of tires. And I just wanted you to know that we use the shredded tires at the landfill for alternate daily cover or for drainage projects out there, and for road base. We're able to put those down, and then you put crushed rock or concrete on top of that. We have a lot of tires. And this just gives you a visual of the region where our nine transfer stations are. The one in the middle, regional landfill, there is a transfer station there, and it's referred to as the Suffolk Transfer Station. So this is all of the area that we cover. So this gives you an aerial view of the landfill. The actual boundary, our property boundary, goes up a little bit more to the north there, but I just thought I'd include the active cells. But overall, we have 833 acres out at the landfill.
Jesus.
Cells one through four are closed. No waste is being disposed of them. Then we have cell five, which is permitted for 44 disposal acres. Cell six has another 41, and that is the active cell that we're currently working in. And then cell seven, down to the bottom, it's currently being used as a borrow pit to support the operations for cells six, and it's permitted for 56 acres. And then all of that area there at the back, next to or front of one through four, is cells eight and nine for future expansion, and we have begun the process to get those cells permitted. Primarily, when we start putting waste in cell seven, we will want to use the dirt from cells eight and nine as cover. So that's a normal process with landfills, is what, you know, you open up a new one to excavate the dirt for the next. Projected life, so at the current rate of disposal at the regional landfill, the current cells five and six will be filled by 2029, but it could be as early as 2027, which will be dependent on volume, the compaction ratio that we achieve, and achieving the planned slopes. From what I understand, the higher up you go, achieving all of those angles in the slope areas gets a little bit more difficult. The total projected cost to construct cell seven, inclusive of all the permitting for cells eight and nine for borrow and other permit updates, it's approximately $30 million And cell seven, then, if we were to just, in 2027, if we would just start putting all of the MSW there, let's say we didn't have a contract with Willabreata, then cell seven could be filled as early as 2035, and then we would need to move into eight and nine. I just thought I'd give you a proportional, or showing of proportional tonnages with the eight-member communities. So for this year, I budgeted or estimated that there's a total of 416,490 tons. Portsmouth represents 9% of that total waste. Virginia Beach and Chesapeake are the largest there. So 2018 highlights. January 25, 2018, is when we launched, and we refer to it as SIPSA 2.0. That was a very pivotal date. That was January 24, 2018, is the day that the very first use and support agreements that have been in effect for over 30 years ended. And here, we started out with new use and support agreements with eight-member communities. So hence, that's why we refer to it as SIPSA 2.0, new and improved. Due to the termination of the contract that we had with Repower South, the service agreement with Willabreata was extended to give SIPSA sufficient time to reissue an RFP. The original contract ended on the 24th, so the 25th, we were granted an extension. Also, on January 25, the municipal tipping fee reduced from $125 a ton to $65 a ton. This was as a result of all of SIPSA's debt has been paid in full. And we also implemented what I refer to as a blended waste disposal system, meaning that the waste from the eastern transfer stations is hauled to the RDF plant, and then is burned at the Waste to Energy, but the waste from our western transfer stations, we have going into our landfill. Landfilling your waste is always your cheapest option, just not necessarily the most environmentally friendly one. So if we do a little bit of that, but the majority of the waste is going to Willabreata, that's how I was able to get the tipping fee down, and I kind of call it a blended waste disposal system. We also, too, have two contracts with commercial haulers. One is with TFC, and another one is with Waste Industries. We have five-year contracts with them for waste disposal. Another thing that we've done in 2018 is we established a monthly regional operations meeting with the member community's solid waste administrators. I sometimes refer to this as our wellness check. Want to make sure that we maintain a clear communication with our member communities, especially those that are the solid waste administrators, that are, you know, knowing what's going on and whether or not we can do anything to help, or what changes or anything that they are having. So we have monthly meetings on those.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Would you take questions as you go along?
Certainly.
Let's make sure everybody is comfortable. Do you mind going back to Slide 9? And the last bullet point, will you explain the contracts with those two?
Certainly. Prior to, or during the first service agreement with Willabreata, all of the commercial waste contracts were all with Willabreata. And Willabreata voiced them and received all of the revenue from those. Even though they came through our transfer stations, all of that went to Willabreata. So when we extended the agreement in January 25, we simplified the contract so that any, anybody coming through our transfer stations is going to be paying SIPSA from now on. So we started, reached out to all the major commercial haulers, and so we have contracts for their waste disposal. They must bring us a minimum of 50,000 tons per year. Anything else on them?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that. When you look at word "TFC recycle," they're into business other than just recycling.
Yeah.
They're in the waste business. And we gave them a special break for those contractors that would give SIPSA a contract to guarantee so many tons. These were the only two that agreed to give us a specified number of tons. So we, it helps us manage our budget.
And they're using primarily the transfer stations that lie to the east?
Pretty much. Yes, sir.
So what is their tip and fee?
$49 currently. However, it goes up a fixed 3% per year. The other contract that we have, we put out an RFP a couple of years ago so that as commercial waste would come into the transfer stations, we would make sure that we had another contractor that would be responsible for hauling and disposing of it. The communities decided that they did not want commercial waste, you know, going into the regional landfill, that wanted to save that capacity for the members. So, and Willabreata actually won that contract. So they haul directly from the Chesapeake Transfer Station, all the waste that comes in there, and they're hauling it to the RDF naturally, and then they're hauling partial loads from the Norfolk Transfer Station. So per that contract, that escalates 3% per year. So that's why the $49 is going to go up at least 3% starting July 1. And then there'll also be some costs for SIPSA in that as well.
And the term of these contracts?
It's five years. So they go to 2023, so I guess it maybe was like five and a half years, because they started in January 25.
What drove the reduction in the tip and fee when it was reduced from 125 to 65? I take it that because of the eastern transfer stations we're going to Willabreata, that's probably a huge savings in transportation cost? Is that what?
No, the driving force really was the payment of all debt. That was the biggest thing.
I would think that that would be a tremendous savings in transportation cost as well.
Well, we were still hauling it to the RDF, so there really was no change there. We just ended up hauling less tons because we didn't get as much commercial waste when we...
Your eastern haulers don't have to travel to Suffolk.
True.
And that, I don't know how many trips are done a day per week, but per year, I would think that would be a tremendous savings.
Waste management does not use any of our facilities.
Nate?
Can you go back to page eight, please? I noticed there was just one of the statements you had made, that only the western facilities were going through the regional landfill. So I gather by looking at these numbers, so we're only putting 17% of the total waste is going through the landfill?
Yes, but it's close to 100,000 tons.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But correct.
The household hazardous waste?
Yes.
I mean, is there any additional cost, and how do citizens know, or whoever's using it? Is it a special call to get those taken care of?
The Household Hazardous Waste Program is that if a citizen comes and drops off some household hazardous waste, we determine where their residency is, and we end up billing that community back. So the city of Portsmouth pays for your Portsmouth residents for those events.
That's for hazardous waste?
Household hazardous.
What about yard debris?
We do not take yard debris. I can't say that we wouldn't take it, but it's not required to be brought here, so I believe you all are taking it somewhere else.
Well, no, let's say that me.
Uh huh.
I cut down a tree, and I want to take it to the landfill. How do you handle that?
The residents of our member communities are allowed 12 free trips per year. It's free to the resident, but we in turn bill the locality for that.
All right. Please.
Just to let you know, we received a clean audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, but we have received a clean audit every year since 2009. But it's always good to point that out. The other thing that has changed is SIPSA no longer serves as the contract administrator for the regional disaster debris removal and monitoring contracts. Previously, SIPSA, you know, procured all of those contracts, and then all the eight localities basically piggybacked on them. That was changed this year, and it was a decision of another committee called the All Hazards Advisory Committee, which is through the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. And they realized that VDEM has those same exact contracts available, so they might as well just use all of them. SIPSA's fiscal year 19 budget is $41.5 million. $32.4 million is for operating expenses. $5.7 million is for capital improvements and equipment replacement, and $3.4 million is for future landfill closure and expansion. With the new member agreements, it was, you know, they were done in shorter terms. So the first agreement, I think, is eight and a half years, I think it is, goes to June 30 of 2027. With that, and having a shorter timeframe, it's very unlikely that it would be financially feasible to borrow money. And that was sort of the intent, is to make it so that we would not borrow money. And that is pretty much the way that we're set up, is to pay cash for everything as we go. So with that, since we have some hefty expenses coming up in the future, the plan is to start setting money aside this year and every year to build up to that, so that, and I've got those numbers down here. Also, SIPSA has approximately $22.6 million in cash reserves. And I know, it looks kind of odd, because you see $41.5 million, and you think you've got over 50% in cash reserves, but once again, we have some really big expenses that are going to be coming forward. For instance, right now, of that $22.6, we have $16.8 million that is reserved for landfill closure and expansion. What we are doing there is we always are setting aside enough money each year to agree or match how much capacity we used in the year. So if we had to close right now, you know, based on the capacity used, that is about how much money you would need to do so. We also have $3.3 million in an undesignated fund balance, $2.5 million for capital projects. So this is what I was talking about. Landfill expansion, just the construction cost of cell seven and getting permits for eight and nine, it's going to be roughly $30 million. And we're going to need that 2027 at the earliest, or 2029 is what we're really, where the plan is for. So it's a lot of money we need to accumulate between now and then. And once you construct cell seven and go until cell seven, then naturally, you're ready to close cells five and six. And that cost, just in today's dollars, is 16 million.
Jesus.
So I don't think SIPSA's ever had this much money. And it was kind of ironic, too, because of course, when we started building up cash, there weren't any interest rates out there to invest, but hopefully that will come back some and help us. But we have a very solid footing, and I think it's a good way to go, planning on cash. We won't have any debt, won't be ever in the place that we were before. When I started with SIPSA in 2009, we had 280, over $280 million in debt. As you know, we sold the power plant to Willabreata for $150 million. And then since then, we have just, every year, paid off all of that debt, so there's actually no debt.
Say that price again, please. $150, did you say?
$150 million is what we got for the plant. We settled in April of 2010. So, so on to the Willabreata agreement. I figure I'll talk about the one that's getting ready to go into effect, instead of all the ones, all the addendums and ones we've had in the past. So an RFP was issued in January of 2018 for Municipal Waste Disposal Services. We received three responses, three proposals in response to that. We received one from RDS, one from Republic Services, and of course, Willabreata. So after months of negotiations, a contract was awarded to Willabreata this past October, and it has an effective date of February 1, 2019, so just in a few weeks. The term of the contract is February 1, 2019, to June 30, 2027. We made sure that that timeframe matched right up with the first end date or expiration date of the use and support agreement, so that we'll know, you know, if any of our eight members want to get out before then, and whether or not we'll want to, you know, move forward with extending the agreement. We have the option to extend... We have the option to extend this contract for two additional periods of up to five years each. So strangely as it may be, we could have one extension that lasts one year, and we could do a second extension that lasts five years. The attorney wanted to make sure they gave us plenty of flexibility, and that's how they crafted the agreement. And of course, the price has to be mutually agreed upon. So, you know, who knows where we're going to be in 2027, but it will probably behoove us to look at cost of landfilling, you know, has there been changes in technologies? Have other businesses, you know, stepped into the market? And really take a look at and review, is this the way we want to continue? Is this the best, what makes the most financial sense for the eight communities? And that's what we'll plan on doing as we get closer to that date. Also with this contract, as compared to the original one, there are no minimum tons and there's no minimum fee. SIPSA is required to deliver the municipal waste received at the Chesapeake, Landstown, Norfolk, and Oceana Transfer Stations to the RDF plant, and it's a rate of $32 per ton. We are currently paying 36, so this new contract brought it down $4 a ton. Also, all of the ash and residue from the Wheel Obrader Waste Energy Plant will be delivered to the regional landfill like it is right now, but it's at a rate of $25 per ton, and the current rate is 19. But we knew that it needed to go up more to make it closer to market. And of course, member communities like yourself may haul directly to the RDF plant. So as a result of this new contract, the municipal tipping fee is projected to be reduced further to $59 per ton effective July 1st. And you probably ask, well, why can't we do it February 1st? The main reason is it takes about 60 days for us to change our tip fee because we have to have a public hearing, we have to advertise it. It costs about $3,500 to advertise it in a paper. And since it's same time of the year that we'll be doing our budget, and I know that we're going to have other changes to the tip fee schedule, I recommended that we just wait till July 1st and incorporate all the changes. Of course, I'm hoping to get it lower than 59.
Be nice.
The U.S. Navy, SIPSA entered into a new contract with the U.S. Navy for waste disposal. So all of the waste that is generated at any of the naval facilities comes to SIPSA. And this contract began September 1st, and it's for one year with four-year options. So all of the Navy waste is going to continue to come to SIPSA.
In that regard, do they take it, for example, if it's the naval station, they take it to the Norfolk Transfer Station?
Correct.
With Navy vehicles?
Correct. But the, that's the only, the Navy only hauls to the Norfolk Transfer Station with their vehicles. They have a contracted hauler, Dorado, who hauls from all of the other, I call them outlying municipal centers, you know, at Oceana, Virginia Beach, Dam Neck, all of those, but those all still come to us, too. The Navy waste is about 25,000 tons per year. So it's our understanding that the U.S. Navy has a contract with Wheel Obrader for steam from the Waste-to-Energy Plant until January 24th, 2023. I'm not aware of any extensions or changes. I do know, working with the Navy, they normally would not respond until we get closer to But that is, that is the contract that we had when we sold the plant, and so as far as I know, that's where it stays. We also have a partnership with HRSD I wanted to tell you about. Up until June 1st of last year, the leachate from the regional landfill was pumped through a force main at the landfill that goes to HRSD Nansman Plant. So the leachate is all the liquid that basically drains from the landfill, and this force main has been in place since SIPSA began. However, as you probably are aware, the Nansman Plant is where HRSD has implemented their SWIFT program. So, oh, I've got that here. So due to certain contaminants that are actually in the leachate, specifically bromide, and the implementation of the SWIFT program, HRSD requested that we redirect that leachate to another one of their pump stations that they know will not be in the SWIFT program. So they have agreed to construct a new force main for us from the landfill to a pump station in Chesapeake, and they have agreed that they will pay 2/3 of the cost for it. They will build it, pay it, and then invoice us for 1/3, but no more than about $2.5 million. So that was the 2.5 million you saw earlier that was reserved for capital.
And from there, where?
It goes to-
Nansman?
No, it goes to the Virginia Beach Plant. So it goes to a pump station at Chesapeake, and then it eventually gets to the Atlantic Transfer Pump Station, I guess what it's called. So in the interim, until the force main is constructed, SIPSA is pumping and hauling approximately 50,000 gallons per day, even Saturday and Sunday, of leachate. And we're pumping it to a pump station in Chesapeake. We're also, depending on the time of day, we're pumping to one that's right over the bridge, over 664, in Newport News right there. Right now, they're saying that the new force main will not be ready until 2022. I think that's just a safe date. I think they will make it happen much sooner than that. So with all of that, as we continue our partnership with them, they would like us to reduce pumping and hauling, and we would like to reduce pumping and hauling. So they have agreed to let SIPSA resume the use of the current force main if we're able to get the flow that goes through the force main at a much lower rate, because then it goes into the SWIFT plant much slower, and they're able to treat it. So in order to do so, we needed a new pump, and we got some of the specs from HRSD. We found a company that has one similar to it, and HRSD has one, and has agreed to reimburse SIPSA for that. So in case it doesn't work, they're willing to accept all the risk. So really, great people to deal with at HRSD, and we've just had a good partnership. Technology updates. We have completed or installed a new SCADA system. Are you familiar with SCADA?
Yes.
And it's for the leachate management at the regional landfill. You might have heard something a few years ago about having some excess leachate in our landfill. It was always contained, it was never out of there. Now that we've put this system in, it gives, it has all of the controls in place so that now that's not going to happen again. We launched a new website in July. Project's underway. We're upgrading our Scalehouse software. It hasn't been upgraded since 2003. We are installing an automated scale attendant at Landstown Transfer Station. We want to, it's kind of like it's going to be a spec, you know, to see if we could utilize that at other transfer stations, which could generate savings. New desktop computers with Windows 10, a new time and attendance software that interface directly with our municipal software system, and we're upgrading Microsoft Exchange since we are on 2010. A little behind. Some of our goals for 2019 is to update and review or revise our financial policies. All of our financial policies previously were all around our debt that we had, so now that we don't have any debt, we need to come up and revise them. We also plan to perform a facility assessment and create a long-term capital replacement schedule for all SIPSA facilities. We will continue to work with the HRPDC, the City of Suffolk, and VDOT on a flyover access to our landfill, which is that, that access or entry, secondary entry, is required with our Good Neighbor Agreement with the City of Suffolk, since they host where the landfill is located. We will also continue to work with the HRPDC on updating the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan. As I'm sure you're aware, SIPSA used to be in charge of that, and when SIPSA's whole organization changed, you know, we got out of recycling and changed a lot of things, the HRPDC became the Regional Solid Waste Planning Agency. But we're working with them on updating that. We also, since we've been here for over 30 years, we have a lot of employees that have their 30 years in and they're retiring. So what we're doing is, as these employees retire, we evaluate what is our staffing needs? Is this the same position that we need to replace? Do we need something different? So we're always mindful of that. I'm also working on a whole, various cost analysis reports to, and then try to get some information from other businesses to see how we compare. And something I'm sure you all will be interested in is providing a five-year projected budget with a five-year projected municipal tip fee. So you all will have something as well to be planning from. So with that, can I address any other questions?
I have one. We reserve the 2.5, 3.5 for closing and opening landfills. How do you determine, I mean, how much waste is there before you determine that you need to close one and open a new?
The landfill is permitted, for instance, cells five and six can only go, they can't go any higher than 220 feet in the air from the ground. So, and we do an annual airspace report, so we know it's filling up as we go. So that's how we know when we're going to run out of airspace.
You might want to say something about our gas system at the landfill? Do we sell gas?
Yes. We have a third party that manages the landfill gas system. Landfills generate methane gas, and so we have a third-party, Suffolk Energy Partners, that is out there managing this. The amount of gas is starting to dwindle because we haven't been, over the last eight or nine years, we haven't been putting waste in there, and it's really the waste and the trash that generates or will create the methane. So we get around $320,000 a year in royalties from that, but we are seeing that the gas curves are going down because so much, it might spike up in a couple of years, since now we're going back to putting MSW in there, but it's largely been ash from the Waste-to-Energy
I, like Luke, go back to the, being president at the creation of SIPSA. And you made a comment that when you came to SIPSA in 2009, that SIPSA had a debt of 250 million, and I heard some people breathe deeply, and I think it's important to put that in context. In 1988, that landfill in Suffolk was all woodland, so that had to be acquired, it had to be constructed, rolling stock had to be acquired, the maintenance facilities had to be acquired and built, the transfer stations had to be acquired and built, the RDF plant had to be acquired and built. And building those things, you have design costs. And this was a big, big project, and we tend to beat up on ourselves. I think we need to step back and celebrate the fact that this region came together to solve a very critical problem, which is what to do with municipal solid waste. And we found a way to do it. We were in recycling, we're in, whether or not, people might want to argue this, but it's much better to invert solid waste into steam or energy than to bury it in the ground. That's a form of recycling. And so kudos to the region, kudos to SIPSA, kudos. And you've had, you've had some goofy things happen, too. Half the revenue stream was cut because of a Supreme Court case early in SIPSA's existence. So let's not beat up on ourselves too much. Let's all break.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, add to you, to you, those of us-
Come on, go ahead, turn, please.
Those of us that were, was in the solid waste business in the 80s when SIPSA was created, every councilman, every city manager, every mayor did not want to have anything to do with solid waste. And John, you're right, we just, Mr. Mayor, we just came together, and if there's one thing that has worked, the Southeastern Public Service Authority has worked for the benefit of the entire region, and it has been a collaborative effort on everybody's part. One other thing that Wheel Obrader does that I think you should know is that when the steam plant or the RDF plant is in operation, they are, they generate on a daily basis 28,000 megawatts of electricity per day, and they sell that to the grid. And that's, that's another important of waste, instead of going into the ground, that energy, when we burn it, we are creating that much electricity, and that's, that's enormous amount of electricity.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Patton? Any other, any other questions by members of council?
No, I'd just like to recommend to our new councilmen, members of Glover and Battle, when we were new, Nate and I, we had an opportunity to view the Wheel Obrader site. So I think it might be a good idea for you guys to go over and see that. We was excited at how they transferred, the Navy with the waste being transferred to steam. And so it's just exciting.
I've already done it twice.
You've done it twice, okay. From Battle.
Well, I'll also extend the invitation to come to any of our transfer stations, or please go out to the regional landfill. Our superintendent will be more than happy to give you a tour so you can see all that we're doing out there as well.
Thank you.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you all.
If you decide to take an invitation, wear old clothes. Wear what you're wearing. It is a waste.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton, thank you for the invite, and Mr. Mayor, we thank you for your hospitality tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mrs. Spivey, our Chief Financial Officer, will come up and give a financial overview for the city's general accounting standards.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council.
Everybody prepared?
Yeah, that's it. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of accounting standards and regulatory requirements in which the city must comply. The city follows accounting standards set by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This primarily relates for our accounting and financial reporting standards. We also follow the Government Finance Officers Association, known as GFOA's, best practices. And that applies not only to accounting, but also to our budgeting practices. Government accounting standards differ from other types of accounting, like private entity accounting, and one of the most significant differences is that we, government accounting standards requires us to use various funds based on what, the resources that are held in those funds. For, so we have governmental funds, and governmental funds handle most of the governmental functions, and the primary governmental fund is the general fund. So the general fund is the fund that accounts for the city's police, fire, education, judicial, planning, permitting, parks and recreation, city council, administration, and others. So again, the primary fund. Then we also have special revenue funds. Special revenue funds primarily are funded with restricted revenues, and they include behavioral health, social services, stormwater, and then multiple grant funds. Our debt service funds account for the funds needed to make our debt service payments, and the payments are made out of the debt service fund. Our capital project funds- Our capital project funds, is the accounting fund that's used for construction of capital projects, which later become capital assets. Then we have permanent funds, and we have one permanent fund, that's the cemetery fund, and a permanent fund is used to account for anything for which the principal cannot be used. So, and that's the, the fund that we have that meets that requirement is our cemetery fund. There's also proprietary funds. Proprietary funds account for activities that are similar to those in the private sector. So largely, these funds should have charges for services that offset their expenditures. And those include enterprise funds. So we have water, wastewater, solid waste, parking, and golf. And it also includes our internal service funds. Internal service funds, they receive their revenue from other departments within the city. But again, the charges for services are intended to offset their cost, and those include the city garage, information technology, our health insurance, and our risk management funds. Then we have fiduciary funds. Those are, include trust funds and agency funds. The trust funds that we have are used to account for the city-sponsored closed pension programs. And the agency funds we have are held, hold clients, let's see, accounts are held on behalf of social services clients. So we don't own that money, we're just holding it in an agency capacity, in an agency fund. Okay, for 2019, we had an overall budget, and this, and 19 is the year in which we are currently operating. Our total approved budget is 526.8 million. The general fund, by far, is the, has the largest budget of all of the funds. Public utilities, capital budget follows with a $56.8 million budget, and public utilities operating fund has a $46.2 million budget. And then all of the other funds are listed, so you can see the amount that's budgeted for them for this current year. Our capital improvement program is a five-year plan with the first year included in the annual budget ordinance. So you can see that for fiscal 19, we show that those funds are adopted. For the subsequent years, so there's one adopted year and four subsequent years, those are planned, but not yet adopted. And so, so each year, you know, one column would move forward, of course, they get a lot of scrutiny before it makes it all the way to adoption, but they would move, you know, move forward within the plan.
All right, before you move on, let's make sure that there are no questions, any questions?
Yes. Proprietary funds for the health insurance, that's kind of just a wash, right? So that's-
It is, it is. So it's, that's, so it's internal service fund, and it's expected just to break even. And, and that's really the plan for all of our internal service funds. So they, they get their charges from the other funds, but really should just break even.
Mrs. Spivey, the 18.5 that jumps up on education in 2020 and 2021, I'm assuming
that's the, if we build a new middle school?
That is correct. Any other questions? So, so those were our accounting guidelines. Then I'll move forward to regulatory compliance. So the city complies, of course, with city code, the Commonwealth Code, as well as the IRS federal tax code are three of the most important ones that we comply with. The city code and the Commonwealth Code include things like the timing of the budget and the audit, the Public Finance Act, which regulates the issuance and management of bonds and other financings. We have, they have regulatory requirements regarding governmental purchasing. And then for the IRS, and some of you may wonder, what are, what are the IRS requirements that we comply with because we don't file income tax return? And it's, so we have our payroll taxes, of course, we comply with, but a lesser-known form of regulations is, regards our tax-exempt debt. So, so by, you know, we get a great benefit by issuing debt that the purchasers of those bonds pay no interest on, but it comes with a lot of regulations of how we use that debt.
Pay no income tax on.
Income tax, did I say, yeah, income tax, that. Bondholders pay, do not pay income tax on the interest earned. Yes. Credit ratings are also very important for the city. Our credit ratings determine the rate of interest in which the city pays on debt that we issue, as well as any debt that we refinance. And our rating is a barometer for the city's financial condition and economic health. The rating agencies, primarily Moody's and Standard and Poor's, has four general elements in which they grade us on that produces our credit rating. Approximately 30% of the rating comes from our economy. And, you know, and that's one of those that we have less of an ability to change, but, you know, we, of course, we do everything we can, you know, with our, with our Economic Development Department and EDA, but, you know, we have less control over that one. Our debt levels and other long-term liabilities comprises 20% of the, of the rating, and the long-term liabilities do include our pension fund liabilities. Financial condition is approximately 30% of the rating, and the city's level of fund balance is very important for, for that rating. And our, the level of fund balance, if we keep a good fund balance, it can offset some of the less positive issues with our economy and our debt load. And then management, approximately 20% of the rating is how well we are managing the city, and one of the primary things they look at are city council's adoption and adherence to strong policies. And, and the city has, you know, has policies that you've adopted, and, and we need to make sure we're always adhering to those policies. Our current bond ratings are middle AA, and I do this chart to show that, that's very good. It's, we, so we, the second tier, double A tier, is considered very strong, and we're in, in the middle of very strong. And, and it's, we would like to maintain those ratings.
Mayor, here's a question.
Paul.
Now, the last slide that you just left.
Okay.
So we're saying approximately 30% of the evaluation process is for the economy. But what is the evaluation process? Do we get to that later in this?
Of how they go about evaluating, or?
Your slide presentation, will it tell, you know, okay, the debt levels, the long-term liabilities, approximately 20%? Will it give you?
We have one slide that talked a little to that. But any, any additional detail, we can provide at a later time.
And I think probably to help answer that question would be good to talk about the rating agencies.
Okay.
Because that's, that's who does the rating. They're the graders. And so either tonight or sometime during near future.
We could provide that, for each of the rating agencies, what they actually-
Yes, and we, we are, we do, you know, have the three ratings by the, by the three rating agencies. And so every, every year, there's an overview, I'll get calls, you know, asking me questions because they have to, with the, with Stormane Oxley's, Oxley, they now have to do an annual review of the, of the city, as opposed to prior to that, it was just when we went to So next, we have the city's financial policies. The city has a number of financial policies. The, the ones of primary importance, especially for our, our ratings, are our fund balance levels. The, you know, our requirement for our policy is less, let's see, greater than, greater, yes, greater than 15% of our general fund revenues. And for fiscal 18, we ended around 25%. So, so our fund balance, again, that's one of the driving factors for our positive ratings. We can only use fund balance for one-time expenditures. So, you know, so anything, anything like adding a position or entering to an ongoing contract is not something we can do with fund balance.
So you're saying that our fund balance, if we remain 15% above what our general fund is, then we can keep our rating at a double A?
No. And that's a very, very good question. So we have about 25%, so we're above that.
Above, okay.
That is one of the primary factors that is, that are, for our rating to be high.
That's right.
Because we, I mean, we have other things going against us. So, so it's very important that we maintain a more than what our policy says, the higher amount we-
To offset the bad.
To offset the bad.
That's it, yeah.
Got it?
I think, and I'll recognize, Paul, it's safe to say that money is golden with the bond rating agencies, you can never have enough cash reserve. Paul.
So, dealing with specifics, what percent should be held in reference to our debt?
The more we can have.
But the bond rating agencies are never going to tell you that number. Other than what we have, you know, if we didn't have what we have right now, our, our strong ratings may be in jeopardy.
And remember, folks, that the ratio is the fund balance to the revenue coming in, not to the debt.
That's right.
And, but if you ask that question, how much cash you want us to have against debt, they're not going to tell you. Because they expect you to know that answer.
That's right.
And they look at adherence to your own policy as well.
That's right. Right, right.
If you say it's 15%, you go, you don't hit it, obviously, not only is the money not there, you're violating your own policy.
We have policies, we are looking to-
All right.
So when you, so when you say 25%, what are you saying specifically for this city in real money?
Can you get a slide?
Yes, yes, we'll get there, we'll get there. Okay, yes.
Looking at your page four might help, where you show the general fund.
Slide four that we've already seen, or?
It's not only.
Fund balance is not on there.
That gives us, okay, so those are the revenues.
That's right.
So, well, so the, you know, the general fund revenue is 241 million. So, 25, yeah, 25% of that, you know, just, you know, is between, what, 50 and 60 million?
Million dollars.
And our policy is 15.
Yes.
We're way above that.
Our minimum level policy is 15.
Right. So it's 15% of the first number.
And we're above that.
Another policy is, you know, as, as well as, this is also a regulation, is that our, our budgets must be balanced.
Yes.
So we can't have expenditures that are greater than revenues. Our debt levels, our debt to assessed property values cannot exceed 4%. And that's, that's a ratio that we are bumping up against. And we'll, we plan to work further with our financial advisors this year on some additional policies, especially relating to our debt capacity. All right. And, and another one is that we'll annually pay our actuarially determined contribution for the city-sponsored pensions. You know, so if, on annual basis, we get, we get a study, it tells us how much they've determined we need to pay that year to, to keep the, you keep the fund in good standing, and, and our policy says we will do it. It also says that for the, those of us who are in the state retirement plans, that we will pay what the state says that we should pay, that we will not under contribute to either of those. So our, this slide shows, as of June 30 of 18, our general fund balance, which is 56.7 million, and our outstanding general obligation bonds for that same period is 520 million. Some of that is, it was issued for the public utilities, and the, the regulations say that any fund that is self-supporting, so, including their debt, that for our ratios, we don't have to count that debt in our ratios. So, you know, so our, you know, water, wastewater are self-supporting, so we can back their portion of the debt out. And then lastly, we talk a little bit about our closed retirement systems. We have a fire and police system, has 705 participants, it is closed to new members, and it's for full-time firefighters and police officers hired prior to July 1 of 95. We also have a supplemental system, it has 393 participants, also closed to new members. The full-time permanent employees who are not eligible for membership in the Virginia Retirement System or the Fire and Police System hired before December 1 of 84 were eligible for this, this system. And then, you know, city employees who are not in this plan are in one of the Commonwealth's retirement plans. And lastly, a little bit on our supplemental pension retirement board funding, a little bit, some history is in 2013, the city issued bonds to make an infusion into these pension funds. That brought the funding level of those bonds up around 80%. And what that, that means is that the assets in those funds are, you know, were 80% of the liabilities in those funds. That doesn't account for the, the bond liability that the city holds, but it, you know, is the funding ratio for the funds. Since then, those ratios have, have come down over time, where the Fire and Police right now is funded at 69.75% and the supplemental at 72.35%.
But that's a year ago.
Shannon has a question.
Shannon has a question.
Hi, Shannon, go ahead.
Is there an ideal percentage where you want to be with the funding levels on those?
The optimal would be 100.
But, right, right.
Right, right.
The standard practice of where standard, the standard would be, where would we like to be?
I think something that would be good, if you don't have already, is we did a, we did a report that shows where the other municipal pension funds in Virginia, where theirs are, and we are within the median of that.
Sure.
When we issued the bonds, we were at 80%. So the rating agencies likely, and they do ask questions about it, would prefer that we're in the 80% funded range. But there's multiple things that go into that calculation. You know, part of it is mortality rates, part of it is the interest rate that the actuaries use to come up with the liability.
Sure.
And right now, they're using 7 and 1/4%. You know, we haven't earned 7 and 1/4% in a number of years. So we, and I know that the retirement board is, you know, getting reports and talking to their investment advisors, as well as, you know, some other things, to see what the viability of increasing those percentages are.
Thank you.
What caused it to go down from 80 to 70?
It's, again, I believe it's a number of things, but one of the primary ones is the interest assumptions compared to actual. The city, I believe, has, you know, since we issued the bonds, been making the annual contribution that has been determined. But that, you know, that contribution is based on a higher interest rate than what our short-term earnings had been. So over, you know, over the period, the full length of the pension, you know, it's possible to, you know, it may be possible to get to that average return, but since we've issued the bonds, we have not gone there.
Mrs. Spivey, I think you said that the assessment debt ratio was 4%, but it's actually 10%.
Our policy, our, right, okay, I'll have to go back and look at, I'll have to go back and look at that.
Okay.
I'm for sure that the state's is 10.
Right.
And I was thinking ours was more conservative than that.
Look at it, but I think we're at 10.
I will. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Spivey. We'll have Mr. Daniel Jones to come forth with the regional broadband.
We take a five minutes for the break. We'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we'll come back into order, please.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As requested, our presentation this evening will focus on the regional broadband network and the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network project update. The agenda for this evening will review, as I said, the regional broadband, regional connectivity ring, or also referred to as the RCR, as well as the Portsmouth Community Broadband or the PCBN update. The HRPDC, under the umbrella, formed a committee called the Regional Broadband Steering Committee. And on that committee, there is a city council liaison, the city manager, and the chief information officers from all of the HRPDC localities. In the summer 2018, at the direction of the Regional Broadband Steering Committee, the HRPDC contracted to complete a 30% design and architectural study for the regional fiber ring interconnection. This study entailed meeting with all municipalities and determining available conduit and the path of that interconnection. The study was completed and delivered on December 31 of 2018, as contracted, and is currently under review by the committee members. The Regional Broadband Steering Committee will be meeting in the upcoming months to determine the next steps regarding the regional connectivity ring. The PCBN, or Portsmouth Community Broadband Network, is an integral part of the regional connectivity ring, as the Northern Diverse Route will travel from Norfolk through Portsmouth and connect with Suffolk, and then travel up the 664 into the Northern Hampton municipalities. The PCBN was designed with the regional connectivity in mind, with the diverse routes, and thus resulting in no additional construction cost for the city of Portsmouth. Yes.
For that segment that goes to the peninsula?
Yes.
That comes through Portsmouth?
Yes.
Will that be on our fiber?
It will be on our conduit, not our fiber.
Okay.
Because the fiber, you want to keep segmented, but what's the regional and what's the municipality? So in collaboration with the procurement, we issued an intent to award notification to Danella Construction, which notifies them of our, of course, our intent to award them the construction contract. The project that they submitted was a cost of $6.612 million. Now, this is just for construction only. This is a conduit, fiber, this is not actually lighting or providing the services. And currently appropriated CIP available funds for this project of $2.27 million. So that leaves a delta of $4.385 million, which has been submitted for consideration with the upcoming fiscal year 20 CIP budget, as we believe the economies of scale can be achieved by having construction completed within a single phase. Because as cost goes on, you don't want them to come into town, back out, moving equipment, back and forth. So as I said, with the intent to award notification, the next step would be the drafting of a comprehensive agreement, which will be between the various internal agencies, as well as the Danella Construction. Then there'll be a comment period, and then agreement execution, and project construction kickoff and phasing. And then the last point that I want to touch on is the connectivity cost. This is one of the main issues surrounding why both municipalities in the region are creating the regional connectivity ring. As for a metropolitan area of this size, the number of carriers in the area are extremely low. You have basically two choices if you live in Hampton Roads. And for a metropolitan area, usually, there's at least 10 to 12 or maybe even 15 carriers. So the connectivity cost, as we see it now, is measured in reference of all bandwidth, omega bits per second. So when you have internet connectivity of 50 by 20, that's usually 50 megabits down, 20 megabits up. So currently, as the city, on a per-megabit basis, for our internet connection to the outside, we are paying $16.30 per megabit. For our point-to-point connections between buildings, between City Hall, and say, High Street, for instance, that cost is $35.15 per megabit. Now, when the ring is finished, that point-to-point cost goes completely away, because the connection between each building is achieved through our own fiber network. So with the region connectivity ring, and allowing wholesale carriers to come in, your wholesale pricing for internet, as I said before, we are paying $16.30 per megabit, drops to 30 cents.
Wow. How does that translate in annualized money?
If I have to, if I had to give you, right now, we're paying the current carrier in upwards of about $600,000. It's estimated that it would be about $100,000 a year, if not. So we have a delta of half a million dollars a year.
Right.
And that's before you sell anything.
This is just the city. The schools will be able to achieve the same thing.
What, Daniel, what keeps the region from not having the number of carriers? Is it the agreements that the regions initially entered into that's keeping the other ones out?
Part of it is agreements, but most of it is infrastructure. For a carrier to come in and supply an area, it has to do the cost of construction. They have to have a highly density area to get the return on their investment. That's why you see those carriers, when they get a little further west, basically, on the other side of Portsmouth going to Suffolk, they don't offer service. They're not interested in it. So by doing this and creating the regional network, you have wholesale carriers coming out of Richmond to Virginia Beach to Landing Station, then you have the four continents coming into the Virginia Beach Landing Station, as well as other multiple cables that they're already talking about. So you create wholesale pricing, which will be able to connect to both east and west.
Even, Mr. Jones, I've asked you to, even for our own citizenry, with the two carriers that we have, we have pockets of our city that can't get, for example, files.
Absolutely.
You know, in Churchland area, you can't get files. And he has informed me that Verizon says, you're never going to get it, because they are not going to put in the kind of infrastructure for us to get it. So we, who can't get it, are stuck with, you know, what we have.
Right. And with previous presentations that we give, and the oncoming of the 5G technology, how you receive bandwidth today or internet is going to change. It's going to become more of a wireless. So you're going to have transmitters, every block, poles, whatever, and then those being much like a cellular signal, but on a smaller scale, will be able to transmit into your home. So how you're getting your actual physical infrastructure handoff is going to be, you know, within five to 10 years, mostly not available. It's going to be a wireless. But at some point, wireless has to turn to wireless. So once again, allowing this, we have the conduit to leak to providers, gives the city a source of revenue. Because if we have the construction done and the extra space, they're more willing to come in, and all they have to do is run the cable versus the construction of the conduit and the cable.
That's why it's okay to refer to this as the middle mile.
Absolutely.
Talk about, you know, design and construction. If this company, if we have all the money to pay, and this company starts shoveling dirt on January 1st next year, how long does it take them to complete the job?
That will depend on, one, of course, funding. If it's, you go in and you have the full 6.6 to delta between the two, they can do it in about a year, 12 to 16 months. They can have it completely done.
With the regional broadband, if we get done before some of the other, like, localities, I mean, will that prevent us from going forth with us using what we have already?
Absolutely not. No, because we have, we're working on agreements both east and west. The region, the regional connectivity will just give us the connectivity between municipalities and to the cable landing section. But there's carriers now where we can get transport to Richmond and achieve that wholesale pricing, you know, as soon as the network is up.
This is information, but let's see if we can get some consensus on one thing. If I remember the number correctly, due to our ring, was approximately 8.5.
Yes, that was the estimate first.
And we have appropriated 2.5.
Right.
Can we have a consensus among City Council that we ask the city manager to make the delta a priority for first-year funding on the CIP, when she brings it back?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And if there's a need to...
Well, this is also a one-time cost. This is a construction cost.
Yeah, I was going to say, too, if there's a need to go even faster, making a out-of-the-budget cycle appropriation, because this is one-time, would be okay. But I think it's really important that we live up to the commitment that we made a year ago to become a smart city.
Especially if it saves on the total construction cost.
Yes, 5G is going to change everything. It's going to change how surgery's done at Maryview. It's going to change how private businesses do business in Portsmouth. And so we need to be prepared.
And you're not looking at the next generation, you're looking at the virtual generation?
And mayor.
Let's see if we have a consensus. For sure, put it in your budget for funding. If there's a need to come back and go quicker, then...
Do the one-time.
We'll come back, we'll come back. What I was getting ready to say, Mayor, if I may, is that what we are doing, and Mr. Jones is a great visionary, he can see technology, he can be talking to me, and I really am saying, yes, yes, yes. I really don't have a clue what he's saying. But I know he knows, so I say, yes, yes. But what he talks about, how what we are doing, is going to attract businesses that want to come, companies that may not even be here, that will want to come through our connectivity to do whatever they're going to do in the Hampton Roads area. That will generate a whole sense of revenue that we've never ever imagined.
Because when a business can connect between multiple jurisdictions without having the cost of the provider, just by what we refer to as the middle mile or dark fiber, that's a substantial cost savings, as well as, we've worked closely with economic development. When you can have one of your economic development pillars of connectivity, it's not about your location anymore.
No, it's not.
It's about a U-connected.
Yeah, that's it.
And if you can say, if the city has the capacity to offer you high-speed bandwidth, or the ability to get high-speed bandwidth, or even connect to these large cloud storages, we're just one hop, as we refer to it in technology, from Ashburn. One hop to Raleigh, one hop to Richmond. So when you can go any three of those places with what we refer to as low latency, especially if you're trading stocks where milliseconds count, low latency is everything.
I'll take your word for it.
I said, we don't know what he's talking about with music. Yes, you, you are.
It's our area.
Any questions? You have a...
I have an assignment. We have an assignment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. Mayor, this concludes the presentations for this evening. I'll yield to you.
Yes, we do have a need to go into closed session, and we have a motion.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A3 for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and/or disposition of publicly held or controlled real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding, one, Crawford Bay, two, the North Pier, and three, development of a new fire station, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to go into closed session for the purposes stated in the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Adam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Somis?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, we are in closed session.